...2013 through posting a notification of the press in accordance with Wisconsin State Statute 19.84. Our health message for today is sleep tips to help kids wait. Does your child get enough sleep? If not, it could affect more than sleepiness at school. Studies suggest there may be a link between skimping on sleep and being overweight. Sleep shortfalls may increase hunger hormones so kids eat more. Also, they're less likely to get exercise and burn off calories if they're tired. To help kids and teens get a good night's sleep, my kids are gonna love these because I'm gonna tell them about this tonight. Remove all TVs, computers, and gadgets from kids' bedrooms. Avoid large meals before bedtime. Set firm bedtimes and wake times. Help kids quiet down a few hours before bedtime. And heavy studying, text messaging, or video games should end in early evening. How much sleep do school kids need if their age is 11 to 17? My boys, they need nine and a half hours of sleep a night. Age is five to 12, 10 to 11 hours, and age is three to five, 11 to 13 hours.
What?
I know. It seems like that.
Eleven to 13 hours?
Well, for three to five-year-olds, if you think about...
Yeah?
Yeah, I think my nieces go to bed at like 7:30, so that probably works out. All right, so make sure your kids get enough sleep at night.
How much am I supposed to get?
I don't know, it didn't say. It only went up to age 17, so...
No, at 19, dude.
Okay, item number two, the ESEA waiver, Dr. Erhart.
As you may know, the Common Core has the ESEA waiver. And Wisconsin filed this waiver, and it was accepted by the federal. Part of that whole policy was implementation of the Common Core standards in the state of Wisconsin. If you may have noticed, implementation of the Common Core standards in the state of Wisconsin has come under a little fire. There was a move to have legislative hearings about the Common Core, and so a series of them are...have been scheduled in the state of Wisconsin. The first was October 3rd in Madison at the Capitol. I believe it started at 10 o'clock in the morning and went till 8 o'clock at night, a pretty spirited conversation. There are three other listening sessions that are across the state. The next one is on the 16th at Fond du Lac, at the City-County Building. Eau Claire on October 23rd, Chippewa Valley Technical College. And then the last listening session is on Wednesday, October 30th, at North Central Technical College in Wausau. So there is an effort to have another look at the Common Core standards. You can talk more about it if you want, but that's...it is out there, and a lot of the educational community, which has worked a lot with this, is obviously a proponent of the implementation. All the work that we've done with curriculum over the last year is based on the fact that we had already endorsed the Common Core. So again, the curriculum work, the whole testing system that becomes active in spring of 2015 is based on those set of standards. So to all of a sudden change that would create a certain amount of chaos perhaps in the educational community, so that's kind of what's going on with that.
My understanding of some of the criticisms of the Common Core that are at least being talked about in our state, and the reason for these hearings is that they want something to be more rigorous. And I don't think we can argue against that. I don't think we can argue against maybe making them more rigorous, but my thought would be, let's implement the Common Core as they are now, assess them in a few years, and then see what needs to be more rigorous. Would...I mean, is that...
I would agree, and I think the Common Core are already quite a bit more rigorous than the existing standards, and more concise and clear. We've talked about more focused. Where the Wisconsin standards are, there's lots of them, and they're kind of all over the place. And the Common Core is more precise and more focused. So yeah, that's what some folks are saying. Those that I think are making that argument, they should be more...but they're not saying what should be more rigorous. And again, the Common Core standards, you know, their birth comes from the governors that originally started that, you know, some five, six years ago.
All right, thank you. Item number three, review new board policy, 1355 endorsements. I believe this came back to the committee because we wanted some examples of what endorsements or testimonials might be, so...Attorney Moore?
Right, let me...it occurred to me that where we're dealing with the drafting of a new policy, it's maybe appropriate to step back and understand how, at least how I understand, and I believe the intent of the whole procedure whereby board policies interact with administrative regulations. My understanding or what my goal in drafting policy is generally to recite what the board wants to happen, and that the administrative regulations consist of how that's going to be done. And procedurally, board policy, of course, by definition requires board approval. Administrative regulations do not require board approval, although it's been customary in this district to bring those to the boards, or for...at least for purposes of full information. I believe often the board has actually adopted them, although it's not necessary, has voted on them. So I say that at the outset to explain the format for this policy. We can...this can be fleshed out as needed in administrative regulations, and I'd be happy to assist with that. But really, the assumption here is that once given the general instructions, administration can fashion administrative regulations that accomplish the purpose, recite it. Having said that, what we've done here, the one point that I recall, there was some concern about here in that last paragraph where the goal was to recite, what about endorsements that really have nothing to do with the district? And so the preceding paragraphs, we recite the fact that in the first paragraph that it's okay for the administration to make...to give references and give testimonials. That comes under the bailiwick of the district administrator who may...and this is the second paragraph, who may approve those or give authority...may give authority for testimonials to be given. Makes it clear that those can't be given in return for payment of any kind. And the requirement that whatever is done is accurate, it's consistent, doesn't reflect unfavorably on the district. Then the last paragraph addresses the fact that it's okay for a district employee to give a personal testimonial with regard to products and services if it's not given in an official capacity. And the examples, I think there was some discussion about the word nexus, which is a lawyer-like word, but I believe it actually came from Dr. Smiley, if I recall correctly.
He does like that word, yes.
But what...my examples, and I'll just read this for the sake of simplicity. For example, an employee who is asked to give a quotation as a satisfied customer of an auto body shop for use in a newspaper ad may do so if the request is not being made because of the employee's status as a district employee, and if the ad makes no reference to the employee's status as an employee. However, an employee as a football coach may not, without the prior approval, without the prior approval of district administrator, endorse a sporting goods store where it's clear that the reason the endorsement is sought is that the public will identify the endorsement with the district's football program. I thought those were the...that was kind of the defining line that I...we were trying to articulate in my mind. If not, you know, we can deal with this as UC fits, so...
All right. Questions, Collins?
Yeah, I do. First, I want to apologize to Superintendent Shulte at our board meeting. I should have took time that night, but I wasn't inferring any sort of this-for-that, for-that-mercy thing at all, you know? And I know, and I believe, that there is none of that going on. And a couple of times I said that I think these policies are...we're looking at these a little more closely because our...I guess I use the word, our culture is changing a little bit to the point where we're trying to establish relationships now outside government here, you know? And which is a good thing, but we need to be careful just how we do that. So, you know, these strategic alliances with whatever it might be, the Asia Society, Dean Healthcare Systems, Dunham Sporting Goods, whoever are healthy for our district and the community. We're supporting each other, so I just...my intent is to make sure, you know, as we continue down this path, that we're aware of, you know, we don't want to give the appearance or create some sort of alliance based on this-for-that, or give that impression to the taxpayers who does fund this, that the district is endorsing a product that maybe the majority of the public doesn't see fit. For example, you know, I imagine we tend to stay away from establishments that aren't...you can consider not socially acceptable, while they may serve good food.
Yes.
You know? That is not something that we probably want to engage in, because we are ultimately representing, well, not just the taxpayers may not like that relationship, but, you know, for our children and our students to know that we're having that sort of...you know what I mean? So that's just in my mind. And I'm not sure, you know, I read this policy, and my first thought is, it talks a lot about district administrator in here, but in my mind, it's the entire Janesville School District. Anybody that's associated with us should be under this guideline.
That is...I believe they are what the key...the use of the phrase "district administrator" is intended to give supervisory power and to give the district administrator authority to say yes or no to a given situation. So that's my intent here.
Okay. And I'm still not...there's just something in my gut feeling about us endorsing products or services. There's just something in there that just doesn't feel right to me yet about doing that. I don't...and I can't quite put my finger on it, other than, you know, and I'm...I think fellow...well, I can't speak for him. So for example, I'm the director of the athletic department, you know, and we use Spalding footballs. And so Spalding asked me to give a testimony about footballs, and I say, "Yeah, jeez, we've been using them for 10 years, they're great." You know, on and on. "Thanks, Mr. Murray, I'm gonna use that in our seasonal catalog." Well, you know, out there, there's a lot of footballs that are good, so why are we...why would we offer that as a district employee to that Spalding? I mean, I'm wondering why, to what benefit is that to us? Even though we look, you know, and part of this paragraph says we look to each other for references, that's not really a reference. It's different than me calling the Beloit Athletic Director and say, "Jeez, you know, what kind of footballs do you use? You know, what's..."whatever, whatever. That's different than endorsing a product or service. So I'm still kind of...why? Why? Why are we doing that? You know, other than just a nice thing to do, what's the benefit? I mean, we, you know, we want to have some sort of outcome, I would think. Please.
Well, this is how I see it, and this is, I think, new territory for us, as you spoke about. And I see it more happening in this district in the technology world. So I can't really speak to the athletic world because I think you have a point with what you're saying about Spalding and the issues that you raise. I know in the technology world, we, first of all, we have really raised the standard in the school district of Janesville. We hired a chief information officer who is known throughout the state, probably in other places in the nation. And so he's a leader. And so we know that other people, other school districts, look to him as to what he is utilizing or how we're putting certain things together in our district. And for example, he is working with Cisco, and I know superintendents in Rock County are waiting to hear what we are learning and putting together, because they all may jump on board with us on an initiative to work with that particular entity, maybe something else. So I think it gives...it brings positive attention to the district, to the good work that we're doing here, that we are a leader in technology, and that they value our opinion. And it helps other districts at least, and maybe other organizations, know what we're doing and the possibilities. Now, they could pick up the phone and call as well. Some will, but I think you get a wider audience when you have a testimonial. And I think we purposely use testimonial rather than endorsement. One, because there is no money exchange, but also, I know Dr. Smiley will say, he won't necessarily endorse the particular product, we'll talk more about how it's been used in the district, what creative innovative thing we're doing with the particular thing. So I do see a little bit of a difference between endorsement and testimonial and reference.
Thanks, I'm just...just talk through this a little bit more. So what I heard was, one of the benefits is, not so much for us, but the benefit is for others that see us giving testimony, so they can maybe then call us back and say, "Well, jeez, I saw your testimonial in Cisco Trade Magazine, what do you think?" You know? But I don't see any...so it's wonderful to share, I mean, you know, this is great that districts are sharing more, and teachers are collaborating, and that's a great thing, but what's the real benefit to us?
To us, I think it brings positive attention to our district as well, as Dr. Smiley has shown up in various publications, and now his tech team as well. They have also been asked to give testimonials because they are experts in particular areas of the field. And so it continues to bring positive attention to the school district of Janesville. I hope somebody picks up, will switch to HP, because they've also asked us that as parents around the nation are reading these national magazines, "Ah, school district of Janesville." Maybe when they do their research, that'll pop up in a Google search. So I think that's the benefit as well.
Okay, it's good public relations, but what does that do for student achievement? You know, if that's...you know, I mean, I'm really driving it way out there.
A circle.
I mean, is it hypothetical that somebody say, "Jeez, what's going on in Janesville? They're in all these...maybe that's someplace I want to work?"
Work or live or raise a family? Students bring enrollment, that brings revenue, that allows me to give him the tools and equipment he needs.
I mean, you know, that seems logical to me, but that seems to be a stretch. But so let's just roll with this IT thing. So Dr. Smiley, you know, is in, I don't know, what, trade magazine? I'll just pick on...we'll use Distefano software, instead of naming names, right?
Yeah.
So he's in there, and he...there's this nice half-page color ad of Dr. Smiley giving a testimony about Distefano software. It's, "Jeez, we've got it, it works, it's great."
This is how we're raising student achievement in the school district of Janesville by using Distefano software.
But I think it's also easily perceived that that is much more than a testimony. I mean, to me, you've got a picture of me endorsing Distefano software in his trade magazine, that's kind of like Janesville School District says, "You should buy these." And that's the part that I struggle with. We can say it's a testimony, but it's, I think it's more than that. It really is an endorsement. So I, you know, I think that's part of the missing piece of educating us or making...you know, how do you separate those two?
And then...
I know we can do it on paper, we can say it, but to really do that is hard, I think.
So let's take that a step further, and now I'm thinking out loud, which is dangerous, but...
I'm listening.
So we are saying that Distefano software has raised our math scores 10 percent, let's just say that's true. And so we are very excited about this. So when I'm in my superintendent circles, I'm talking about this, or maybe not, because I don't want them to achieve better than us, that's not true. So we're really talking, so I am testimonializing or endorsing all over the place with my colleagues quietly. Is what's wrong? What is wrong with saying that publicly? You're not giving me any money, you're not giving me any breaks or discounts.
Yeah.
It's a good product. I don't know.
It's not that it's wrong, it's just that when...this is just my...how I'm looking at this, when you're a government entity funded by taxpayer dollars, how do you know...because we represent them, how do we know they believe that that's something that we should be doing with...you know, I mean, because it all...they're funding it.
Right.
So you're saying, they're paying for it, but, you know, that's the piece I'm kind of missing, how do you...
How would...so how would taxpayers know if they're making their dollars...
Yeah.
Are used in a good decision? I mean, we're making those decisions all the time to make Distefano a Hasselbacher.
Yeah, I know, I...
Close the line, I don't know.
I'm just trying to make sure I...
Can I comment? Because I think this addresses what you're talking about, and this goes back to that fundamental issue that I was raising at the beginning. That this is not intended to be an endorsement of endorsements, it's intended to define the boundaries within which we work, and then to assign a certain amount of discretion to administration. So you're right, I mean, there ought to be a smell test, and that's what you expect administration to apply. For example, to return to the football analogy that's used here in this example, yeah, do we want the football coach endorsing Spalding footballs? Well, the district adminis...they...this says you can't do that without the consent of the district administrator. And the district administrator said, "You know, I don't want to get into that business of endorsing footballs." However, if the football coach, from the days when I played football, there were various varieties of mouth guards, completely different design, right? And they worked differently. And my coach felt that there's a particular type that you ought to have, this one from Wilson that was molded to your mouth. And so I feel strongly, as a football coach, that this is better for our students, that we want our student athletes to wear this particular variety. You can only get them here in town, you can get any other...all the dozens of other kinds out there. But we really, I feel strongly that this is appropriate for our students, and I would like to endorse this because it's in the best interest of our students. That one, the district administrator might say, "Okay, that makes sense to me, I'm okay with that." That's an application of discretion within the boundaries of the policy. Now, we can tighten and loosen this policy to any degree, but you're right, we can't identify specific situations until we see them, and that's what we have administration for.
Just, thanks. One other thought, and I shared this before, I was at a Parker football game, I don't know, a month ago or so, and I found out that the district received about $1,000 for this, because I got there and it was a...
Mayonnaise.
It was a mayonnaise.
Mayonnaise, yes.
You know, whatever. And they're handing out little sandwiches, and there's placards in each end zone, "Use this mayonnaise," you know? And then right after the...right after the opening of the game, the PA announcer gets on and says, "Use this type of mayonnaise, yummy yummy, it's good," you know? And I thought, "Wow, that's interesting." So how do you...now, that was certainly a district endorsement, and we got money for it. Now, how did we decide that that type of mayonnaise...and I'm using that as a real example, but it could be something very large, you know, very significant, like a health insurance provider. So how did, you know...
You're saying that was an inappropriate endorsement?
No, I'm not saying it is, I'm just saying that's what happened, and I was surprised that that happened. Because therefore, that's an example of this-for-that. It was, you advertise my mayonnaise, I'm gonna give you $1,000.
Well, I can respond to Dr. Sperry. You'll recall, he sent the explanation to the board on this, and when that came across his desk, it came across in the regard of, it was Hellman's in this case, wanting to show appreciations to mom, moms in the community. Now, I mean, it could be anything, obviously, they can come up with any gimmick, but in this case, that's what they wanted to do, to support schools across the country and to show appreciation. And so they did, yes, they gave an amount of money. We have that similar, not exactly, opening day. We have Sam's Club come every year and connected with Walmart, and they give gift cards to our schools, and they've done that for a number of years. And so that's, in a way, that's free advertising, they're up there in front of 1,400-plus people. So, and I probably could think of more examples of those kinds of things. U.S. Cellular, oh, they're getting lots of play with this particular contest, they did with Monroe. So yeah, we have lots of situations that, you know, we might need to dissect and say, "Where do they fall?" Because by virtue of anything, you know, right now, we've just been giving endorsements as we use names too, though we're not getting any money for it. So yeah, there are a lot of situations. When is it right, when is it not?
Because that, I think that example is that, like, does that fall under the gifts category that Hellman gave us that gift, and in return, you know, they...
Though their name was out there with the sandwich.
Their name was out there. But you know, I think of, you know, there's other...there's all kinds of places in town where, "Yeah, we'll give you this," and we give a nice thank you, whether it's a school or the district giving a thank you, so their name gets out. So there's kind of the gifts thing versus...
And the sponsorships, and I ran into this the other day. When is a sponsorship different than this? And this maybe doesn't address that, but we have many organizations that sponsor, so we put their name up. The track meet was one. We're doing the multicultural gala, we're part of assisting with that, though we don't own that. Lots of sponsors and advertising, those are gonna be all district people there seeing those particular sponsors. So that's another...that could be a gray area, too.
It just...to me, there's a little bit of difference between that gentleman for Sam's Club, Walmart showed up at the...and he awarded gift cards, because that's part of one of their missions, to be involved with the community and education. But this mayonnaise thing was, you know, there was advertising in the public on the football field, and then being announced to use this product. To me, there's a little difference between the generosity of Walmart giving gifts at a...giving usable gifts for product at a event.
Yeah, but don't you think they're wanting people to come to their store? The gift card is for Sam's Club.
Oh, sure.
So people spend more money, isn't that the gain?
Right, right. You hear Walmart in your head, you might say, "Hey, they gave something, I'm gonna go out to Walmart."
Yeah, so it's like a degree removed, maybe.
Somebody had, I'm not sure if it was Dave or not, but it's like, "Well, that's interesting because, well, can Distefano software say, 'Hey, I heard Hellman's for $1,000 got to be the football night sponsor? Can I put up a placard and have...say nice things about Distefano software.'"
And we have policy about advertising, people can advertise at our football games. We...they do pay to advertise, so that's a whole nother...
I was gonna say, it really is paid advertising, really is another thing.
It's okay.
I'm done. Thank you.
Well, yeah, you know, Kevin, I...Christian Murray, I agree with a lot of what you're saying, and I appreciate the concerns. The one point, and I may have missed it, because I apologize for coming in a little bit late, but, you know, there are other things that are non-monetary, they're non-product, that you get when you have testimonials. And the... And the relationship piece with the companies, I think are important. You know, I'll talk on my side. There are a handful of the insurance companies that I work with that, you know, they can use my name whenever they'd like, okay? In exchange for that, I sit on an advisory council. So, they come to me before products hit the market, before all the other brokers see them. And I get to see what they are and have input on those. I don't get to release it earlier. I don't get to sell it earlier or any of those advantages. But, I do get to know what's coming and basically make some, you know, have some input on that. You know, and part of that is the relationship. And I think this world, whether it's, you know, we're going to, I don't want to necessarily go to the international piece. But, part of what we're doing with China is building the relationship. Part of building, you know, having strong relationships even on the company side. We are still, even though we're, you know, a nonprofit and government, we're still a big, big client to a lot of these firms and an important relationship. And, you know, I think there's a piece there where it can be beneficial, you know, especially using the technology with somebody like Dr. Smiley, who, you know, is so renowned and, you know, so bright where they, you know, Google might come to him and say, listen, Dr. Smiley, what do you think about this? You know, and that can benefit the school district of Janesville. Because in the end, we could get a better product or a better solution because of the input that he was able to put in. And a lot of that is just the relationship piece. So, you know, I think, you know, Attorney Moore said pretty well. The discretion piece, you know, and I've said this before, you know, we evaluate Dr. Schulte and, you know, she evaluates her staff. And if they're not going in the direction that we want, then we'll make, you know, appropriate changes. But, I guess that's enough for now.
No, I appreciate that. You know, I really value your point of view. Because, you know, I come from the public sector, you know? And I, and the more I'm around you, the more I learn that point of view. And that's valid. I, you know, that makes sense to me. That really does. And, yeah, thanks.
I'm just going to chime in a couple of things. I think the reason we're going over all of these, we're revising some policies and bringing forward new ones is we're trying to be more transparent as we're doing these new things. That's, that's the key, I think, is to be as transparent as possible about what is allowed, what is not allowed. I, I think, to bring a kind of a business phrase in, part of this is that the school district of Janesville is, we're kind of building our brand. You know, our brand is to be an excellent school district. So, part of this will be getting our face out there as the leading edge of using technology or whatever it might be. And I think that kind of the devil is in the details, that the phrase, "All references and testimonials shall be accurate and consistent with the district's experience with the vendor." Right there, it's going to be a factual statement. It's not going to be, oh, DeStefano Software is the best in the world. It's going to be, this is what we, this is what it is and how we used it. So, you know, if some of that can maybe be even further flushed out in the admin regs, I think that'll be helpful.
Motion to move to the board for discussion?
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed? All right, that moves to the full board. Item number four, review revised board policy 3540, purchasing decisions and consider approval.
Motion for approval.
Attorney Moore.
I think it really is, now that we've adopted this policy, we're just filling in the blanks.
Right. Because nothing changed. It's just clarifying that it's connecting this one to 1351. Okay. All right. Any questions? All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed? All right, that one moves to the full board too. Wow, that's the easiest one we've ever done. Yes. All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Item number five, review, there's several here that are kind of connected. Are all, would you say all three of them are connected enough that we should? All right. Well, I think what we'll do is we'll just kind of discuss all three of them at once. And then, we'll end up voting on them individually, so.
How is this different?
Oh, we'll talk about that. All right. Review.
Can I make a motion for approval?
Sure. So, we do have a motion on the floor to approve the first one, the retention and promotion of students.
Administrator Reg?
Item number five, 6311.
Yep.
And 6311.1 administrative reg, right?
Yep.
Okay. So, we have a motion to approve item number five, which is a board policy revision and an admin reg. Dr. Earhart. And can you explain what's different? We got a paper copy and there's just one minor change.
As Kristen said, this is a domino effect. All of these policies are all, in essence, have a relationship with each other. When we change one thing, it impacts other policies. So, that's what we, as we moved ahead with some of the changes, we've tried to go back through board policy and look where certain policies then become incongruent or they don't line up correctly. So, that's what we have. 4321, we changed the grading system with the standards-based report card in the elementary and middle school. The policy still reflected letter grades. So, we had to make those changes and make certain amendments with that. The policy 6440, number six, also then looks at some new language that's come from us, from the federal government and the state about E L L. Talks about a new assessment and we, and access. So, the old language didn't reflect the new assessment. So, we've just updated the policy so that they're really current with existing regulations and practice. And the final one, two, 6810, again, references the new grading system, 4321, where we had a, the letter grade system. So, this brings all of our policies in these three areas consistent and parallel with each other. And again, the motivation behind is that whole domino effect. So, that's really what the changes are. The one, the one was added from the middle school. There was not a provision for appeal. Typically, always in a policy, there's an appeal. It says in the area of retention, the principal's decision is final. There should typically always be an appeal process. So, the language that was added there was the appeal process is to the director of instruction. So, that's the kind of change, again, which makes it consistent with other policies that we have that always give parents an appeal, right? So, summary, that's really what all three of them about. Amy and Amy Sheridan and Julie DeCook are here to deal with specific questions you might have on any of those.
Do we ever have any appeals on that that go beyond just questioning the teacher and it's not resolved at the student, teacher, or parent, teacher level?
Yes, occasionally. On a retention, on a retention one, I've got a request to review a retention decision. Rarely, but it has happened.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Earhart, in this, I'm looking at 6311.1, the admin reg. So, a parent or guardian can recommend their child for retention. And they've, they have to do that in writing. And I'm guessing the, and then the final decision lies with you. But, is, is the opposite true that if, wait a minute, I'm not sure I'm going to say this right. Can, can a, so a parent can appeal if the child is determined that they should be retained in their current grade level? That's when a parent can appeal that decision as well? And that final decision also lies with you or how does that?
Yeah. The piece that they added, I'm the appeal process or this position.
Whether it's to retain them or to move them along, the final decision ultimately?
And we deal with both. We have, sometimes there's parents that believe the child should be retained. The school does not.
Oh, okay.
So, it goes both ways. It does go both ways sometimes.
Okay.
And we obviously feel that's not in the best interest of learning. Those are more extreme cases, but they do exist.
But, I think you outlined very well kind of what's all the data that's considered, so. Any other questions? And I saw that you changed a lot of the language to reflect the trimesters at the elementary. And so, really just kind of updated all of the changes that have been made.
Saw the language parallel, for now.
For the moment.
The other thing, and Scott felt, did us a favor a few times, that we try to make some of the language a little more permissive. So, if the state does change something, we don't have to come back here and change the and and the every time. So, we made some of it a little more permissive so that we don't have to be bothering you with all those minute changes.
All right. We have a motion to approve board policy 6311 and admin reg 6311.1 to move to the full board. Any other discussion?
Did we have a second to the motion?
Yeah.
Yep, he did. All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed? All right.
Make a motion to approve board policy 6440 and admin reg 6440.1. Motion to move those to board for approval.
Second.
This one had obviously a lot of change. A lot of new language and different language. Is, has the process itself changed considerably? Or is it more about like the type of testing and assessment that's used? You know what I mean?
I would say that's accurate. And the other thing that we're trying to do is bring more clarity to board. There's a lot of verbiage in our policies. When you start to look at our policies compared to other places, we have a lot of detail that sometimes I think is confusing too. So, Mrs. DeCook really tried to clean up the language in that so that it's more straightforward. And if someone wanted to look at what that policy, they would be pretty easy to understand and interpret rather than require extended study.
And I saw that it's changed from an exit kind of recommendation or procedure to it's considered monitoring, so that the student will still be monitored. So, recognizing that they're still, they were still an E L L student at one point. So, I guess my question is, is that going to be more onerous than the exit? Exit planning or is it more?
I think it, it's an effort to continue ongoing support in monitoring the student learning, which is what we, our whole bigger effort is to always pay attention to all the details of it rather than, oh, you exited the system, you're gone from us now. We're going to keep an eye on you no matter what.
For two years, so, okay.
I think I know the answer to this. But, when we're changing our credits for this following year, or not following, the, starting next year. There was mention in here that you could get a half a credit for, at the high school level, for successful completion of an E L L course for English. Does that move forward or is that separate?
The ability to earn credits for English language development classes has not changed. That's staying consistent with previous policy.
Okay.
Does that count towards the English requirements or is that an elective?
If the student is taking only the English language development in lieu of a regular English class, it would count as the required English. Some students take both. And in that case, it would count as the elective.
Okay.
And about the previous two-year monitoring period, that is a federal requirement. And they have changed the use of the word exit to mean a different point in time. So, that editing is reflective of that.
Okay, good. I like that word. I don't like the word exit anyway. It makes it seem like they're leaving forever or something. All right. Any other questions? All right. All, we have a motion to move 6440 and 64, 6440.1 to the full board. All in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed? All right, thank you. Last, item number seven.
Make motion for approval of admin reg 6810.1, grading systems and consider approval and move it to the board.
A second.
All right.
Something like that.
And as Dr. Earhart said, this, first of all, it gets rid of the pass. I wasn't even aware that we had a pass as a option.
Yeah, that, that's outlawed now too.
Good.
The P grad is gone.
Good. It's time for that to go. And then, the rest was about, yeah, the 4321. Okay. So, any other questions about the grading systems? All right. We have a motion to move that to the full board for approval, 6810.1. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. That was moved to the full board. I meant to say aye, by the way. Okay. Thank you. Item number eight, discussion of procedure for making changes to the employee handbook.
I think I'm on. Okay. This should be short. But, I wanted to give you a description of what the process will be like for any handbook updates. And I don't suspect that there will be many changes as there would be more updates or clarifications. And so, there are two types of updates. One would be what I would consider urgent updates, maybe because of a board policy or a legal update, something to that, to that degree. So, we would need to do that on a monthly basis. If that were the case, I would bring it up at the board agenda meeting, the board agenda setting meeting for that particular PPC committee meeting on that month. Otherwise, we're going to do quarterly updates so that our employees are not trying to figure out if there's a new update every single month or whatever. They can expect if there are updates, they would take place quarterly. And so, we have November, January, April, and July that we will bring any updates to the PPC meeting. And again, just to verify, those would be perhaps additions to appendices, clarifications in the handbook language, perhaps adding a section and in some case, maybe eliminating a section if need be. Let's see what else. In addition, we'll probably have a few board policies that need to be updated due to the handbook. And we knew that was coming anyways. So, in November, I expect that I'll be bringing one, two, three, four board policies and one administrative regulation. And just to give you a heads up, those would be the drug and alcohol-free workplace, the employee fringe benefit board policy and admin regs, short-term leaves, in particular, the one about once in a, once in a lifetime chat. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And then, the grievance procedure, which has been updated, we need to bring forward.
Okay.
And then, and we'll have some of the upcoming handbook language updates too. Very minimal changes in the language. It doesn't change the intent, just clarification. So, that's, that's what I want to give you a heads up on.
Okay. And I just want to suggest if, you know, if there are things that are very timely because of a legal issue or, you know, something new, regulations, whatever, that come through, at the agenda setting meeting, we could determine whether or not they actually have to come through PPC or just go straight to the full board too. If it's something that we have to do, then we have to do it. So, we could skip that step in some of those circumstances.
That makes sense. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right. Any announcements and updates?
Didn't we get something punted to us last board meeting?
FIAD is in November.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Get it. FIAD punt.
That was good. That was, that was good. Sports references are usually, they're lost on me too.
Dr. Schulte. This evening, Wednesday, October 16th, Craig High School will have its fall choral concert at 7:30. We have a new choir director. And he is new, brand new, I think, to the field as well. So, this, yeah, first-year teacher. He's very impressive. I had the opportunity to meet and speak with him just about a week or two ago. Kim and I were out at Craig High School. But, if you have a chance, just to stop in, even if you can't stay for the whole thing, I think you will be pleasantly surprised. Tonight, 7:30.
Any other announcements?
Yes. It's Boss's Day today.
Oh, that's right.
Is that right?
It is.
Free chow?
No, in the section where we used to have the benefits.
Yeah, back in that, yes, in that weird little maze back there. All right. Item number 10, future committee agenda items. So far, on November's agenda, I have the board policies that Mary Ann just referenced, the FIAD credit for athletics, a foreign exchange student policy. Is that correct, Dr. Earhart? Is that you? Okay. And that's all I have at the moment. Dave?
I would like to have a discussion about the fundraising policy, just so it's clear within the schools.
Okay. So, more discuss, you're not looking for necessarily any changes at this point, but to discuss it first?
Yeah. Discuss it and just make it clear and then, you know, down the road, you know, we can maybe make it evolve.
Okay. Anything else that we know is coming up for November? There's something else that we left off of this month. There's something else that we left off of this month. Was that the foreign exchange student one?[1747.83]